Hey, good morning, everybody. It's good to be back. I'm excited for these next two days and I'll give a couple of minutes for some people to get on if people want to tune in live. You're also welcome to watch the recorded video later, either way is fine. I've been looking back on the week and we've learned a lot and I'm excited. It's helped me a lot just to prepare. Anytime you teach, you know, you prepare it and you kind of like Pastor Bill says, you preach it to yourself before you preach it to anybody else. Well, I've certainly taught myself this stuff before I teach it to anybody else. And it's been really helpful for me and hopefully it's been helpful for you as well. Good morning Angelo, it's good to see you. Welcome. We'll get started in a couple of minutes here. I'll give another minute or two. These last two days, we're going to focus on probably the heart of discipleship. So what are parents supposed to do to raise their children in the Lord, to teach their children about the Lord? That's what we're going to look at today and tomorrow. So I'll give another minute or two. For those of you who are tuning in live, when I have my PowerPoint up, when I'm showing that, I can't see the comments. But if you want to text me on my phone, if you have a question, I'll get that and I'd be happy to answer it. And I can try to check comments from time to time, but I try to keep the PowerPoint up because whatever I'm seeing is what you're seeing. So I try to keep that the same. Alright, I think we can go ahead and slowly get started here. So let me pull up the PowerPoint. Let's see here. Like I said, whenever I go to slideshow, it just starts with the first slide. I'm just flipping through here. We've gone through a lot. I am really glad that we've had the time to do this. We talked about discipline yesterday. Okay. Okay guys, well, as you know, I like to begin with prayer. Let's pray before we get into it. God, you are good to us. You are overflowing with love and joy and peace. You are a fountain of joy, God, and I pray that we would come to you. I pray that we would not try to find our joy in worldly things that are broken cisterns, like Jeremiah says. They might offer a little bit of fleeting joy, but it will end. You, God, are the fountain of joy and blessing. As Pastor Bill told us last night at the prayer meeting, in your right hand are pleasures forevermore. In your presence, there is fullness of joy. So I pray, God, for all of our church, that you would help us to draw near to you during this time especially, that we would find our joy and our pleasures in you. Now specifically for this time, God, I pray that you would help me. I pray that you would help me to teach correctly and clearly. I pray that your word would shine through. And I pray that you would bless parents through this time and through this video. Please grant us success and success as us being the parents you want us to be. In Jesus' name, amen. Okay guys, let's look at what we've learned so far. And I love that we do this every time and the slide keeps getting bigger and bigger. What have we learned? Number one, we looked at Genesis 1 through 2. We learned that the family is very, very important. It is the building block of society and the main discipler of the children in the family. Number two, we looked at Genesis 3 and we learned that because of sin, family life is difficult and requires active effort. Passive parenting will not work because we are all sinners. Our children are, we are, we slide towards sin. We have to walk against the grain. We have to swim against the current. We have to walk up the escalator going down if we're going to make progress. Three, we learned that we are always examples to our kids. For better or for worse, our kids are watching and learning and listening. And we have an opportunity to model for them who we want them to be later on in life. So it's important that parents are today who they want their kids to be later. Also, we learned that discipline is the path to freedom and joy. And so we use discipline in our relationships with God as we're seeking joy in God. Those go hand in hand. And our culture likes to separate those two things, but they actually go together. Yesterday, we looked at discipline. We learned that we should discipline our kids God's way. And there is a lot to that. I can't boil that down to one sentence, but that's what you get. If you didn't tune into that one and you want to learn more about how do you handle it when your child disobeys, just tune into that video. Well, today, we're going to talk about our role as parents in teaching our kids the Bible and training our kids in the Lord. What does that look like for a parent? So you're not a pastor, you're not, you might not be a Sunday school teacher and that's fine. So what does it look like for parents to teach their children, to train their children in the things of the Lord? So today, we're going to look at what the Bible says to parents on this subject. Tomorrow, we're going to get very practical. So today is the foundation for what God wants from parents when it comes to instructing their kids in the Bible. Tomorrow is going to be full of practical helps and it's going to be full of illustrations of how you can do this in your everyday life. So today, we're going to build a biblical foundation. We live in an interesting time in history. There are so many opportunities for us parents to pay other people to do things that parents used to do themselves. For example, we can pay people to cook our food. We can pay people to wash our laundry for us. We can pay people to teach our kids piano or teach our kids baseball or teach our kids to read and write. And so many other things. And that's not a bad thing. I'm not saying that's wrong, but I'm saying it's very unique in the history of the world. I don't think Israel in the Bible, they had piano instructors where you would pay them or you could go to the restaurant. We have a lot of opportunities as parents to let other people help us, to let other people fill in for us in different ways. And that's not a bad thing. We go to the restaurants just like you guys. We don't homeschool. We send our kids to a school so they can learn. So that's not a bad thing, but it is interesting. Now, the bad part is many parents today, they view the church just like they would view the school. And what I mean by that is we parents, we send our kids to school and it's the teacher's job to teach them math, reading, history, art, whatever other subjects they're learning. And we as the parents, we supplement what the school is doing. So the primary teacher of math for our children is the math teacher at school. And then we parents follow up behind that teacher and supplement with homework and if we have to tutor him, whatever that looks like. Now with the church, we can sometimes think the same way, right? We can take our kids to church and think it's the pastor's job to teach and train my children. And my job as the parent is to supplement what they're doing at home. Well, that's actually backwards and we're going to see that today. It's actually the parents' job. It's our job as parents to instruct and train our children. And the church's job is to supplement what we're doing at home. And so it's kind of a reverse way to think from school and from some other institutions we have today. But we'll see that it's the parents' main job to disciple and to instruct. And the church and the pastor's job is to supplement what you're already doing with your kids at home and to be a resource to you. So we're going to look at three scripture passages today. And we're going to learn why and how parents ought to disciple their kids. Before we do that, I'd like to start with a parenting fail. Just like we did with discipline, we're going to see a time when parents failed to do what the Bible told them to do and we're going to see the consequences. We're going to be in the book of Judges, Judges, chapter 2, if you want to turn there, Judges, chapter 2. So the book of Judges comes right after the book of Joshua, both in the Bible and in time chronologically. The book of Judges, you could call it from bad to worse, because the book of Judges starts out and everything's okay. But then as you read it, it just gets worse and worse and worse. There's a degradation that you see as you keep reading through the book. I actually just finished the book of Judges in my personal Bible reading yesterday. And so it's from bad to worse, but in the beginning of this book, things are going okay. By the end, it's like the wild, wild west on steroids. Everyone's doing what is right in their own eyes. So we have to ask ourselves, what led to this crazy degradation? What led from everyone serving the Lord in the book of Judges in the beginning, which we'll see, to everyone doing just crazy stuff, whatever they think is right, no rules, no word from the Lord, they're just living life however they want. At the end of the book, how did it happen? Well, we see how that happened in chapter 2 of Judges. So we come to Judges. Joshua is old and his generation is older. They have conquered most of the promised land. They have come into their inheritance after 40 years in the wilderness. And then we're going to see what happens when Joshua and that generation passes away and the new generation comes up. So I'm going to read Judges, chapter 2, verses 6 through 11. Judges, chapter 2, verses 6 through 11. When Joshua dismissed the people, because he had just dismissed them to go to their inheritance. When Joshua dismissed the people, the people of Israel went each to his inheritance to take possession of the land. And the people served the Lord all the days of Joshua and all the days of the elders who outlived Joshua, who had seen all the great work that the Lord had done for Israel. And Joshua, the son of Nun, the servant of the Lord, died at the age of 110 years. And they buried him within the boundaries of his inheritance at Timnath-Hares and the whole country of Ephraim, north of the mountain of Gosh. And all that generation also were gathered to their fathers. Now listen to this. And there arose another generation after them who did not know the Lord or the work that he had done for Israel. And the people of Israel did what was evil in the sight of the Lord and served the bales. So Joshua and his generation had seen God do amazing things. They saw God sustain them in the wilderness for 40 years. We learned in Nehemiah that their clothes never wore out, that they always had food, they always had water, God provided for them, and they saw God miraculously defeat their enemies for them. They knew God. They had experienced his faithful care for them, his blessings. And verse 7 tells us, the people served the Lord all the days of Joshua and all of that generation. The days of the elders who outlived Joshua. So that generation loved God, served God. So how did verse 10 and 11 happen? If Joshua and his generation loved the Lord and served the Lord, how did their children not know the Lord or the work that he had done? The answer is Joshua's generation, that godly generation, did not teach their children about the Lord. They themselves, they knew God, they served God, they loved God, but they neglected to train their children. They neglected to teach their children about God. They were not intentional. They were not diligent to instruct their children. And as a result, those children grew up into adults and became idolaters. And if we're looking at this, this disaster didn't even end with their children. But it goes on through the entire book of Judges, generation after generation of idolaters. Generation after generation of people who do not know the Lord. And we see the failure from Joshua's generation. They were godly people themselves. They did not train their children and their children grew up to be idolaters. It's a depressing story. It truly is a parenting fail. So we learned two things. I want us to learn two things from this story. Number one, for parents, being a godly person by itself is not enough. Joshua, by all accounts, in that generation, they served the Lord. They loved the Lord. They knew the Lord. That didn't automatically rub off on their kids. You know, you can't automatically transfer yourself to your kids without intentional work and effort. So parents today, our godliness does not magically rub off on our children. We have to be intentional and diligent to train our children if we want to see them grow into godly adults. Now, I'll say that being a godly person is certainly part of the solution. I'm not saying don't be a godly person. What I'm saying is you have to move beyond being a godly person yourself to intentionally and actively teaching and training your kids. Alright, number two. The second lesson I think we learned is getting our kids around other godly people by itself is not enough. And I get that because Joshua's children, the children of Joshua's generation grew up with all these godly people, all these godly adults, parents, uncles, aunts, grandparents, all these tribes of godly people, but yet they grew up and became idolaters. So I think we learned this lesson. If the only thing we as parents do is take our kids to church, that's not enough. Now, taking your kids to church is certainly part of the solution, just like being a godly person yourself is part of the solution, but it's not the totality. There's more that we are required to do as parents than simply be the church chauffeur. And so it's easy to take these parts of the solution and think that that's the whole solution. If I'm a godly person, they're going to see that my kids are and they're going to follow that. Well, maybe they will, maybe they won't. Or if I get my kids to every church event, then my kids are going to be godly. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. But what the Bible says, which we're going to see in a minute, is being a godly person is part of the solution. Going to church is certainly part of the solution. Taking your kids is part of the solution to church. But it's not all that we're supposed to do. So like I said, we're going to look at three passages today to see what the Bible tells parents to do. So again, our children need active intentional effort. Passive parenting will not work. So let's go to the book of Deuteronomy. So back up a couple of books there to Deuteronomy. We're going to look at chapter 6 of Deuteronomy. So we back up to this book. Now, in the book of Deuteronomy, Israel has been through the wilderness for 40 years and they're on the edge of the promised land. They're about to receive their inheritance. Moses has led them this far, but he's not going to enter the promised land because of his sin. So Moses gathers all of Israel and he gives a giant speech. And that's the book of Deuteronomy, is Moses's final address to the people of Israel before they enter the promised land. It's a wonderful book filled with good lessons. And I want us to look specifically at Deuteronomy 6, verses 4 through 9. And this is some of the most important instruction that parents are given in all the Bible. So I'm going to read Deuteronomy 6, verses 4 through 9. Hear, O Israel, the Lord our God, the Lord is one. You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your might. And these words that I command you today shall be on your heart. You shall teach them diligently to your children and shall talk of them when you sit in your house and when you walk by the way and when you lie down and when you rise. You shall bind them as a sign on your hand and they shall be as frontless between your eyes. You shall write them on the doorposts of your house and on your gates. So we see Moses telling the parents specifically, you need to teach your kids about the Lord. And then we see that parents are to do this when? When they're sitting in their house, when they're walking by the way, when they lie down, when they rise, using the everyday moments of life. Parents are to teach and instruct and train their children. So we learned two things from Deuteronomy 6. We learned that parents bear the ultimate responsibility to disciple their children. And we're going to see this in the other two passages as well. The Bible never says this pastor bears a primary responsibility to disciple someone else's kids. In fact, we parents bear that responsibility. Two, we learned that parents are to be intentional every day to guide their children in the godliness by using the ordinary routine moments of life. And that is great news. And I'll tell you why. Sometimes when parents are told that they're the main disciples of their children, they see it as one more thing to put on the schedule. One more responsibility, one more plate to keep spinning, one more ball to juggle. And they might ask, where in the world am I going to find an extra three hours every day to do Sunday school with my kids? Or to preach a sermon to my kids? Well, the good news is you don't have to find three extra hours. You just have to use the time you already have with your kids. So this is not something that you make a schedule for. This is something that you work into your schedule that you already have. And that's the wisdom and the grace of God that tells parents, you can do this while you're doing all the other things you're doing. Because frankly, parents, we do a lot, right? One day I made a list of all the things I do as a parent and it was really long. And I thought, man, my kids need to be more thankful. But the good news is this instruction, this training doesn't have to be an extra burden. Rather, it's just a matter of using the time we have. Okay, so that's what we learned from Deuteronomy. The next place we're going to look is Psalm 78. So let's go to Psalm 78 and I'll put it up here if you don't want to turn there. Psalm 78 is a psalm as Asaph. And Asaph wrote this. It's a great psalm. He basically tells the story of God's dealing with Israel, starting with the Exodus from Egypt and going all the way to King David. So it's a song that's teaching history basically and teaching God's faithfulness. And we're going to look at verses 5 through 7. It's likely that Asaph is referencing Deuteronomy 6 when he writes these words. He says, and I'll read it here. God established a testimony in Jacob and appointed a law in Israel, which he commanded our fathers to teach to their children, that the next generation might know them, the children yet unborn, and arise and tell them to their children so that they should set their hope in God and not forget the works of God, but keep his commandments. Here again, we see God's plan for the transmission of truth to each generation. Parents were to teach their children the words of God, the laws of God. And get this, these children who were taught would then grow up and teach their children. And they would teach their children and their children and that would go on. Thus, every generation will learn to set their hope in God and not forget the works of God, but keep his commandments. The reason we teach our children the words of God, the reason we train our children in godliness is so we'll have godly kids. Yes, but it goes beyond that, so that every following generation of our families will know and love the Lord. Do you guys get that? With no exaggeration, I can say that every future generation of your family will be impacted, will be blessed, every generation by your faithful discipling and teaching and training of your children, parents. We are always building a legacy that goes far beyond us and even far beyond our children and even grandchildren. The way we raise our kids will impact every future generation of our family. Now, the truth is, our legacy can be positive or negative, right? That means every future generation of our families will be impacted positively or negatively by how we teach and train our children in the Lord. We can have a legacy like Joshua's generation if we're not careful. And they'll be, they were that godly generation, but their kids were just idolaters. And whatever godliness they had, however they knew the Lord, loved the Lord, that didn't transfer to their kids somehow. We can have that legacy if we're not careful. Or we can have the legacy which Asaph describes here, where we start or continue, depending on your family history, you start or continue a family line leaning toward godliness. A family legacy and heritage where kids are regularly trained in the Lord, discipled and sent out as mature-equipped Christians. So when we intentionally and diligently raise our children in the Lord, we are blessing every future generation of our family. That's amazing. It blows my mind, the impact I have based on my parenting. Now, sometimes in my mind, parenting is not the most important thing. And there are times for that, I suppose, but I think I need to remember, and perhaps you too, that our parenting is going to leave a legacy far beyond most of everything else we do. We have a chance to bless people who will never know our names. Isn't that cool? Like eventually, if the Lord tarries, the Lord willing, I'm going to be the great, great, great grandfather to some people and I have no idea who they are. They're not going to have any idea who I am, or was by that time, but they can still be blessed by me. They can still be positively impacted by me. They can be a part of my legacy, of my heritage. And I decide what that legacy will be. I decide what that heritage will be every day when I'm parenting my kids. Every day when I'm discipling them, when I'm training them, when I'm disciplining them, like we talked about yesterday, I am creating a legacy which will go far beyond me and far beyond my generation. So we learned a couple of things from Psalm 78. Number one, day by day, we are building a legacy that will impact our families for generations to come. Number two, we have the chance to bless every future generation of our families by discipling our children today. Is anything more important than that? Let me ask a couple of questions. If you had to choose, and I'm not saying you have to, but if you had to choose between having a big house and a lot of money or a godly legacy, which one would you choose? If you had to choose, I'm not saying you have to, if you had to choose between your kid having a room full of sports trophies or a godly legacy, which one would you choose? Again, I'm not saying you have to choose between them, but I think sometimes we need to give thought to which is more important. I know, I know, all of you would say, I would rather have a godly legacy which extends to the next 20 generations of my family if the Lord tarries. Our money, our houses are going to be gone one day. Our houses are going to fall down. Our money is going to be spent. The trophies are going to collect dust. But our children are going to raise their children who are going to raise theirs and raise theirs. And that transmission of truth, that transmission and training, that is what's going to impact the world for years to come, generations to come, centuries to come, if the Lord tarries. This is our priority, parents. I got a little preachy there, but I get excited. I get excited thinking about the possibilities for my family and future generations. Okay, so Psalm 78, we're building a legacy. Finally, we're going to look at Ephesians, chapter 6, going to the New Testament. And Ephesians, chapter 6, Paul wrote Ephesians. It's probably a circular letter, which means he wrote it for a group of churches and they would read it and pass it along. And the letter is really good. It starts out with grounding its readers and biblical doctrine. And then the last half of the letter gives very practical advice. So you start with the truth and then you learn what you're supposed to do based on that truth. Someone said, before you know what to do, you have to know what is true. That's the way the Bible works. So in Ephesians, we're going to look at Ephesians, chapter 6, verse 4. When you look at chapter 5, verse 22 through chapter 6, verse 4, Paul is giving advice to families. So you can read that. It has some great stuff for marriage and also for children and for parenting. So let's look at Ephesians 6, 4. Fathers do not provoke your children to anger, but bring them up in the discipline and instruction of the Lord. So rather than provoking their children, fathers, and I would say mothers as well, are to nourish. The reason it says fathers is fathers are to lead the family. So husbands are to lead their wives, fathers are to lead the kids. We are to be the head of the family, faithfully sacrificing ourselves for the good of our family. And you'll read that in Ephesians 5, if you want to read that. Just like Christ gave himself up for the church. So fathers are to nourish their children in the discipline and instruction of the Lord. So again, I'll say that we see parents as bearing the main responsibility for the instruction of their children. This is primarily our job, parents. And then I want to look at something else. The Greek word behind discipline there, it carries the idea of a rigorous, all-encompassing training. A training which includes skills as well as knowledge. And so I like to picture someone training for like a, what do you call it, a triathlon. And so he has his trainer and his trainer is looking over what he's eating, how he's sleeping, how he's riding and running and swimming and all aspects of this person's life when he's training for this triathlon. If you're really, if you're a professional. how he's riding and running and swimming and all, all aspects of this person's life when he's training for this triathlon, if you're really, if you're a professional. All of it's being guided by that trainer with that goal. That's the same kind of idea here is this discipline is rigorous, all encompassing training toward a desired end, toward a goal. So parents are to teach and train their children in godliness. So the lesson from this, I could say two lessons, you know, parents are the main instructors, disciplers of their children. The other lesson we get is parents are to both teach and train their children. What I mean by that is kids need to know certain things and kids need to be able to do certain things. So when we train someone in godliness, it's a matter of knowledge as well as skills. And so if all you have is head knowledge, you're not going to be a very effective Christian or a person than anything, right? If I want to learn how to play the guitar, I could read one hundred books on how to play the guitar until I pick it up and start actually trying to play, I'm not going to make much progress. So with any type of skill, practice leads to, I'm not going to say perfection, though it's a nice alliteration, right? But it leads to uh learning that skill. And so skills and godliness would be things like uh being able to turn to every book in the Bible or knowing how to find verses in the Bible. If you told your kids today, hey, look up first Samuel fifteen, verse four, would they be able to do it? Another skill would be prayer. Do your children know how to pray? Do you give them practice? Times of practice, opportunities of practice and prayer? We'll talk more about that tomorrow. But I want us to realize it's knowledge as well as skills. Okay, we've looked at three passages in the Bible and we've uh learned some lessons from each one of them. Let's put it together now. Deuteronomy six teaches us that we parents are to teach our children by using the everyday moments of life. This is not an add-on to our schedules. We, we put it into our already full schedules. That's what Deuteronomy six teaches us. Psalm seventy-eight teaches us that we are always building a legacy. And we are to build a legacy that will extend to all future generations of our families, a positive legacy, a godly legacy. So we see the importance of it. From Ephesians six, we learn that we are to teach our children knowledge as well as help them to develop the necessary skills for godliness, all encompassing, rigorous training. So let's sum this up in one sentence. For the sake of all future generations, we should intentionally use each day to teach and train our children in the instruction of the Lord. We see here our motivation, which is that the sake of all future generations, we have a chance to bless all future generations. We see our uh method. We're going to intentionally use each day, the moments of each day to teach and train our children. We see our goal. We want to see godly children who will grow into godly adults, who will be able to do the same thing with their kids. So this is what the Bible wants us to do as parents. This is the responsibility we bear. And um tomorrow, we're going to get into the fun stuff, like how you, how you do it today or tomorrow afternoon. Uh, do want to ask a few questions. Talking about using the, the normal everyday moments of life to instruct our children, what are, what are you doing in the normal everyday moments of life with your children now? So how do you spend your time with your kids? What are the normal conversations you have with your children most every day? And it's, it's great to have those. And I'm not saying that every conversation has to be a Bible verse. Um, but it'd be good to take stock of when are those times when we're naturally interacting together? And I know it's hard during COVID, I guess. Try to think COVID time and post-COVID time. When are those natural times when we're together and talking, interacting? And number two, have you considered the legacy you are building every day as a parent? The importance, supreme importance of every interaction with our children. And I would ask you, what do you want your legacy to be? And what can you do today or this week to build toward that legacy? So all of our small interactions are building up toward a greater whole, which will be the training and modeling we do for our kids. So if you're married, I would encourage you to talk about these questions with each other, pray about them. If you're single, uh pray about it, talk about it with a friend or with me, you know, or Pastor Zach. And hopefully um you can, you can get a vision for what your parenting today is accomplishing in the future. That there, our culture tends to uh downgrade parenting. It tends to look down on it, you know, if you're a single income household and mom is just raising the kids, there, there's some disdain for that in our culture. Or even if you're a working mom, but you still want to invest in your kids. But we realize uh from the Bible that raising our kids, raising godly people is one of the most important things we can do with our lives. Okay, well, that's all I have today. Hopefully it was a little shorter. Like I said, tomorrow, we're going to get into the practical helps with this. How do we take what the Bible tells us to do and actually do it? I'm really excited for that one. Uh, so tune in tomorrow at ten or watch the recorded video. And thank you guys for watching. I hope it's been a blessing. Let's see here, I mean, in this here, okay. Yep. So thank you guys. Uh, we'll see you tomorrow or on the next recording.